Welcome to tonight's forum. This is featuring three of Whitman candidates who will be seeking to the open ballots, actually, to the open positions on the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee. Candidates on the ballot are as follows. We have Frederick Small, who is candidate for reelection. We have Heidi Hosmer and Chris Scriven. I'm Kevin Tocchi, and I will serve as the moderator. At this particular time, we do have two of the three candidates. We are, of course, hoping and awaiting the third candidate, Mr. Scriven. All three candidates were sought out for the political forum, and again, we hope that we end up seeing all three of them here to discuss some of these important issues. Our forum is fairly simple. Opening statement will be about one to two minutes. We'll have a candidate Q and A, and it'll be a mix of long, long-form questions, and we'll even sneak in a few quick questions or quick answers for the candidates, see how well they think on their feet, as well, a closing statement. Now, prior to going live, we drew for places, who would start? And we will start with Mr. Fred Small. Mr. Small, you have up to two minutes to provide an opening statement.
And I believe I can be a little bit brief, but I've been honored the past six years to serve as the representative from Whitman on the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee. Past two years, I've been the vice chairman. Prior to that, I was the clerk for a few years. Believe in rolling up my sleeves and getting involved, and the work isn't done. So I'm hoping to continue, and I'm hoping to be reelected for a third term. As we go on this evening, I'm sure we'll cover a lot of the topics and a lot of the issues and the hotspots, you know, that affect us today. So I'm looking forward to giving my points of view and also my experience as far as where I stand on certain issues and also what I've tried to do about other issues. That's me in a nutshell. Married, wonderful wife, two kids that went through the system, grandchildren, and just care deeply. It's a wonderful community and wonderful town that we have here.
Excellent. Next up is Heidi Hosmer, candidate. Heidi, you have up to two minutes for your opening statement.
Good afternoon, Whitman. First, I would like to thank Kevin and WHCA for facilitating this forum for us this afternoon. My name is Heidi Hosmer, and I am a candidate for the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee. I have been married for nearly 31 years to my husband, David. We have two children. I have a son, Patrick, who is 35, and my daughter, Melanie, who is 28. I attend Calvary Chapel, where I have taught Sunday School and Vacation Bible School. Taking three mission trips have been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. I have community and municipal service, serving on the Rockland Board of Assessors for six years. The Energy Committee, where I became familiar with the RFP process, and we won grants for two schools having solar panels. So also being on the Board of Assessors, I am familiar with budgets and the levy limit and how it all comes together. I am a corporate educator, and I'm passionate about learning and teaching. The students will always be my first priority. I voted to support the schools and all the budgets at this past town meeting. And I also care, our children need to be valued. A strong school system is the basis for a strong community. The safety and security of all the students are vital. That is why I voted for the updated cameras and updated security door at town meeting. I hope during this forum, I can earn your trust and your vote. Thank you.
All right, and again, we are coming to you live. If you are watching us, of course, this will be rebroadcast, and we will start with the Q and A portion of this. This race actually features two newcomers to Whitman, to Whitman politics, and an incumbent. Make an argument for experience versus new people bringing new ideas, or vice versa. We'll start with you, Heidi.
Actually, I think both things are quite valuable. Experience is something that you gain over time, and if you have experience, you can look at the issues more in depth. I think being new, it's a fresh pair of eyes, maybe some new ideas, maybe a different point of looking at something to help with some of the issues that we face. But I think both, in their own way, are very valuable.
Okay. Fred, same question.
Okay. Well, experience, and I've got to say, my first months or almost a year on the board was a learning experience. However, going back to my experience prior to getting elected for the first time, I had been on recreation. I had been the chair of the Recreation Commission. I had been on the FinCom. I have also was proud to be on the feasibility study back when we were at the old high school toward building a new high school, and also on the High School Building Committee. So I have an understanding at that time of how a municipality works, and I think that's very important. And it's very important even for a newcomer to have that type of experience and understanding of how things work. And then, as you transition into the school world, and you learn what Chapter 70 is and Chapter 71, and what's regional transportation, what is circuit breaker, and how does that formula work, things progress, and you get more involved, and you dig in deeper. So I think experience is very important. I do also realize that no matter what, this election is going to bring a newcomer. The math just dictates that. So what I'm hoping is that it brings a newcomer and also someone with experience, and that would be myself.
Okay. All right, next question. Past couple of fiscal year budgets, the school committee and superintendent have sought a little bit higher than normal annual assessments. What's your understanding of such an increase? Each town's finances, what needs to be done to ensure that the district is properly funded in the future?
Well, and when you say they've sought higher assessments...
Annual assessments.
Annual assessments.
To each town.
To each town. But what they've sought is additional revenue. And you have two things. You have a budget, and your budget serves you to a certain level. You have the services that you're providing. Now, in each of the past two years, or I should say, for next year, that we just finished that budget season...
Correct.
And for the season that we're, the budget we're in right now, there were tremendous increases to the assessments, but the services themselves were level. So that means that costs went up, all right? Or revenues declined or didn't keep up. And that's where the big key is. The revenue portion, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we're under Prop 2.5. Towns can raise the levy 2.5% plus new growth. And I'm sure Heidi's very familiar with that formula. However, the state, Chapter 70 funds, which is 52% of our revenue to fund our budget, is only increasing at a half a percent. So that is what forces that assessment to be so high. The state pounds their chest and says, "We raised Chapter 70 financing or funding by 3% last year." Well, Whitman-Hanson received half a percent of 20-something million dollars. You just can't keep going that way. You know, you have to get the money from somewhere, and if the state's not going to give it to us, that's our only other source of revenue is the towns and the assessments. So number one, we have to get more of what we're due from the state. We have unfunded and underfunded mandates, and people will say that we bang the horse and pound the drum, et cetera, just today. Okay, it's being debated in the Senate right now to fully fund regional transportation, which the law dictates that they shall fully fund regional transportation. Okay? They're debating whether or not to do it at 100%, 75%, or in the 60s, as we've received the past two years. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, many percentages of the assessment.
Remember, if in fact, your time is cut off, again, I don't know if folks can see it, but we have cards, and this is kind of like a stoplight type of a process, to let the candidates know, and they've gone a little long. Even though there's only two candidates here at the moment, the idea is to try to keep it fair and equitable for each candidate to be able to make their comments and do it fair. So if there's something that you kind of got abbreviated at the end during your closing statement, you can actually use that time as well. Same question for you, Heidi.
Would you mind asking it again?
No, absolutely.
Thank you.
So the past couple of fiscal year budgets, the school committee has sought a higher annual assessment from Whitman and Hanson. I want to get your understanding as to what you understand when it comes to these increases, where each town stands for their own finances, and also what needs to be done to ensure the district is properly funded for future budgets?
Well, I think that things are going up, and it is a revenue situation. And we do have that Prop 2.5, which does cap how much we can raise revenues. So it really comes down to what I believe is the underfunding with the Chapter 70, the circuit breaker, and unfunded mandates. It's very difficult when you get a mandate that they don't give you the funding for, and you have to somehow work it into the budget and have enough to run everything. And the fact that it's just been a level set, and we haven't even increased anything, is very challenging, I believe. So I think that we really have to continue to advocate, just as Fred mentioned, the amendments that the Senate are debating. It's so important that these go through. The regional transportation, we need it at 100%. We need our Chapter Fund 70 money to be what it's supposed to be. Half a percent is just, that's just not going to do it.
Okay. Well, we're going to kind of stay on this topic. I want to get your thoughts. Many communities on the South Shore have actually talked about unfunded mandates that a lot of school systems and districts are asked to abide by, and it's a continuing problem, especially for Whitman and Hanson. What needs to be done, and would you be in favor of court action against the state? Fred?
Well, be in favor of court action. It was actually my motion a few meetings back that was voted unanimously by the school committee to start to look to seek counsel, either pro bono or contingency, so that we wouldn't be writing a check out of our own funds, to sue the state for the deficiencies in regional transportation in particular of their funding. Because as I say, by statute, it says that they will fully fund. Okay? Now, Senator Tar has three different amendments. One is to 100%, another is at a lower level. Right now, they want to have, I believe it's about $65 million, or 62 million, somewhere in that range, that they want to fund regional transportation with. He has amendments at 73 million, 77 million, and 85 million, 85 million being fully funded. If we were able to receive that, fully funding, because we're only seeing in the 60% range, you're talking, as I said, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I am definitely in favor of court action. I'm definitely in favor of whatever we can do in order to be able to stand up for ourselves and be able to obtain those monies. And I looked the governor in the eye a couple of weeks ago and told him point-blank that's the very same thing. I don't know how happy he was to hear that, but had the opportunity, and I took it.
Excellent. Okay. Heidi, same question. Unfunded mandates, what needs to be done, and would you be in favor of court action against the state?
I have to agree with Mr. Small. I believe that advocating and doing whatever it takes to get what we need to get to meet our costs, especially unfunded mandates. You give a town a mandate, and then you say, "Figure it out," I just don't think that's right. I absolutely would advocate, if necessary, legal action.
Okay. A new school superintendent is starting in a couple of months. So what's your understanding of Jeff Simonak's vision for the district? And share your thoughts on working with him. Heidi?
I really don't know him very well, since I wasn't, you know, the selection process and how it went. I believe he was a principal, and he's done a great job. I know that he's very concerned about safety. I saw what he did with the drunk driving thing, and that was a very positive impression I had. I feel like he's going to do a great job.
Okay. Fred, same question.
I had the luxury of being on the superintendent's search committee, as well as, you know, being able to interview all of the candidates initially, or the ones that we selected to come in for interviews. And Jeff was far and above ahead of his peers throughout that process, and he brought it home on the final interview in front of the school committee. Jeff has a different vision, and he will be probably a different driver than Ruth has been. Jeff is all about kids, all about the students, has a very, very strong special needs background, cares deeply and passionately about special needs to serve that population of our community. You'll find him to be hands-on. I think you'll find him to be the type of superintendent that will be down in the hallways, so to speak, and seeing the different kids as they're going back and forth to classes, still be involved, you'll still see him at ballgames. You'll see him to be a very strong communicative leader. Communication with the school committee, I think, will be fantastic, as well as communication with his building principals, his teachers, et cetera. I look for a very strong leader, and I look at someone that's going to analyze how we do everything and not just shrug his shoulders and say, "Yeah, that's the way it's been done." He wants to look at every way to do something, and he also wants to look at people that have a different idea than him, and he wants to be able to get different points of view. So I find him to be a very open-minded person.
Okay. Talk to me about transparency, especially when it comes to being on a board like the school committee. I ask this because during my time as a person in the media, a lot of times you hear residents or some voters ask as to what's going on with finances. I'm not just saying Whitman and Hanson, but around the South Shore. Talk to me about the importance of transparency. Fred?
When you're a taxpayer, you want to know where your dollars are going. You want to know what they're being spent on, and you want to know how they're being spent. And there's difference between wants and needs, and are we buying something just for the sake of buying it? Are we buying something because we need it? And, you know, that's where the tax portion comes in. But in anything that you do, I mean, we have open meeting laws. Everything is done right at that table when we vote on things and we discuss things. And I know myself, my phone will ring with questions. I answer the questions to the best of my ability. I've never had anyone tell me that I've not answered their question. You know, so I want to be transparent. I want everyone to know whatever they want to know. I will say at times that you do find people that say, "Well, I didn't know about this," or "I didn't know about that." The information was there. They just happened to not see it. And that's perhaps up to us as leaders to become more effective. If we can make sure that we're getting the message out, that's our job. So we do it through our TV, you know, maybe through press releases, through the superintendent's weekly message, et cetera.
Okay. Same question, Heidi.
Transparency is absolutely critical. I think that's the one thing when you do have to go to folks, and it is taxes, and they're not sure what's going on, and they don't feel like it's being communicated to them, gives people a lot of angst. So transparency, and to Fred's point, sometimes it is out there, but people don't see it. Maybe they don't watch a school committee meeting. Maybe they don't attend a school committee meeting, and they don't know. So I think we do have to be more effective in maybe pushing some information out, as well as when anyone does reach out, to be honest, transparent. To me, transparency is the key, and that with transparency comes good communication within the community and the residents.
Okay. We know that the town of Whitman, during this past town meeting, you had the chair of the Finance Committee get up and speak, you had the town administrator Frank Lineham get up and speak, and their message was synonymous that they were able to put together a bunch of fiscal '19 without an override. But moving forward for fiscal year 2020 and beyond, something needs to be done because there are problems with the town's finances. Again, knowing that you're serving on a regional school committee, a regional board, but yet you are representative of the town of Hanson, do you feel that a Prop 2.5 override is the best method to be able to get the town's finances in order? Heidi?
I think that a Prop 2.5 override, after we've exhausted every avenue that we can go down, after we've gone through the budget, prioritized with what is a need, what is a want, after we've gone to the wall with the state to get what we should be getting and asking for the proper funding, after all of that is said and done, then if that's what it takes to keep the schools going, then that's what we need to do. With that said, once we earmark certain monies out of an override to the school, I realize that the money goes back into the general fund the next year. But if there is a way that we could make them foundational budgets that year over year, that money is still being spent where we originally said we need it until perhaps we're more stable in the school area, if that's where it comes from, and we don't need it anymore. And that goes for any other area, because just to do it one year because there's a need, and then take it and throw it in the general fund, and then spend it in ways that perhaps we didn't talk about, I think that's what really concerns folks. So being specific and deliberate about what we do.
Okay. Fred, same question.
Not to delve into the town's pocketbook so quickly, but to look at how the town has structured a few things. One thing is the police station and some town hall renovations. They did those items within the levy limit, with the plan on paying for it out of free cash. Every year, when you don't spend money in the line items, the money gets certified by the state, it goes back to free cash. They've been paying that, and I think it was an $800,000 bill this year, out of free cash. So if you did a debt exclusion, where you're saying, "Okay," like we did when we built the high school, it's a debt exclusion, we're excluding that amount of debt, and we're building the school. If they do a debt exclusion and refinance the police station, those town hall renovations, they can turn around and then free up theoretically about $800,000 worth of money within the budget that would have negligible impact, so to speak. Now, you take the next step, and you look at us. We have to make sure that our budget comes home and it comes proper. We have to do everything that we can do to contain our assessment and make it livable and sustainable. Am I an advocate for an override? Absolutely not. Overrides are forever. Well, I guess you can't do an underwrite, but...
It's rare.
We will.
Very rare.
But at the same time, if we are short of where we need to be, I believe it should be up to the taxpayer and the community to decide what type of educational system do we want? Do we want to have the system that is going to only provide for a smaller percentage of students to be able to take a language of middle school? That not every student has that ability. That is the wrong way to run it.
Very good. Wish you had a bell here. Ding.
I know.
Heidi, I'm going to ask you kind of a follow-up question. Do you agree with Mr. Small in regards to a debt exclusion for the building of the new police station, the town hall renovations, and I believe the fire department renovations as well? Do you, are you on board with maybe the town seeking a debt exclusion? Again, this is above and beyond, but this is just kind of your opinion as a taxpayer. Or do you think, do you see another methodology to be able to help generate revenue or be able to help the town's finances, which therein would also be beneficial for the school district?
I think a debt exclusion is a better alternative to an override, because it does have a beginning and an end. As far as revenue goes, outside of state funding or state aid to the town, I think I agree that a debt exclusion would be the first place to go, and if that does it for us, that's great. Because again, overrides are tough. Everyone's costs are going up, and I think always it should be the very last resort after we've exhausted every option there is, without sacrificing the educational value. And again, it is up to the taxpayers, what are their priorities? And I'm hoping that they care about their community, and they care about the children and the students, because that is the cornerstone to a strong community, is a good school system. It's good for the property values. It attracts people to the community, so it's very important.
All right. Would you like to follow up, Fred? Because again, you kind of delved into the debt exclusion, because maybe there might be something additional, an additional idea, or do you want to pass?
Well, I think that everyone, we always have to look at whatever we can do to generate additional revenues. You know, in conversations, you know, and I don't feel comfortable to bring out some of these ideas right now, but there've been ideas, you know, to maybe defray some of the athletic costs and different fundraisers that could be done. I mean, one idea I had years back, can the town sponsor a credit card? Okay, you get points for Southwest Airlines. Well, if you use a credit card that has a picture of the town of Whitman and sponsored by the town of Whitman, you get maybe Mutual Federal to sponsor it, and now they, instead of points, you get pennies. And now those pennies can go either back to the town to raise additional revenue, or they can go to lower your tax bill. I mean, we've got to start trying to think outside the box as to what we can do. You know, we've got challenges.
All right. Again, you are watching a live WHCA production featuring candidates who are running for the two open seats this coming May 19th, which is Saturday, just less than two days away. And we have Fred Small and Heidi Hosmer, who are here answering questions, and we got a few more questions before we delve into a couple of quick questions and even allow you each to ask a question, if that's what you'd like to do. I know, Heidi's like going, "Oh..." It's all right. Don't worry about it.
I'm not doing that.
It'll be good. So we're sitting here, we're talking about financial things, and one of the things that you'd have to, as a school committee member, somebody, let's say if for the 2020 budget, you're sitting here talking, and you can't come to an agreement with the two towns, and it's kind of put on the school committee to make cuts. You have to weigh things like class sizes. Retained teachers are cutting... And you have to weigh things like class sizes, retaining teachers or cutting programs. There are communities that are doing that. If you had to pick one, which direction do you go in? Heidi.
This is a tough one, because athletics are a big part of, important. Our children oftentimes get scholarships based on their athletic abilities. So to remove athletics could be a devastating blow to the school. And the arts, I just, I'm not sure where we would even go with that. Everything is so important. That's a tough one. I don't think I can give an answer on what has to go. I mean, we need to keep the class sizes down, we need our teachers. I think we're at the point where everything we're doing is necessary. I don't know that there's anything that could be eliminated without being a detriment to our students and...
Again, if I could just kind of, again, interject, and I know it's tough, but there are communities right now that are having to decide, do we give reduction in force notices to, you know, a number of teachers? Do we cut certain sports programs? Or, you know, do we just increase class sizes? You know, so that's, it's pick one and try to give a reasonable deduction as to why you would pick that. And I just want to make sure I re-explain that question.
If there are any after-school programs perhaps that we could cut down or remove, do we charge user fees for the sports? Is that something that could perhaps, instead of eliminating something, perhaps eliminate the user fees? I mean, create the user fees, I'm sorry. So we don't eliminate the program is what I'm trying to say to you. I just don't know how, that's a tough question for me to answer. I don't know who becomes the sacrificial lamb here in a thing like this. I mean, how big are the classes that, I mean, how big are we talking about increasing them?
Use your imagination, because some parents would say, "Whoa, my child has to be in a classroom that's 25-plus, 30-plus, 35-plus. I don't want that." And are willing to, you know, do what it takes. Then you have folks who are on a fixed income, we're like, "Oh, any more increases, I don't know if we'll be able to live in this community." So, but again, it's something that, if you want to address it in your closing statement, you definitely can do that. Fred.
I would never, ever, ever put forth a budget or vote for a budget that would have any cuts to it prior to going to town meeting, prior to going to an override, if that's what it would take, and letting the townspeople make the decision. I wouldn't do it, period, prior to that. Now, if the townspeople decide that's what we want, it's going to be on the table right up front. User fees, athletics, you're not going to save much money. Athletics raises a lot of money themselves. There's not a whole heck of a lot that comes from the operational budget to fund athletics. You would end up talking reduction in force, you'd end up talking teachers, therefore you'd end up talking class size. That's what you would be sacrificing. And let me add this. Within the past years, okay, we've climbed up a little because we were as low as, I think, third from the bottom in per pupil spending. I think now we're about 10th or 11th, something like that, out of 351 school districts. That is not something we should be proud of, okay? We can be proud that we've eliminated waste, we've taken our busing, had staggered times, saved over $300,000 annually by changing what time we start school. We can be proud of the fact of what we did with the copy center. We've earned awards and actually $25,000 for our innovative thinking, okay? We can't be, you know, overly proud of the fact that we don't spend enough. And since about 2008, we've lost 37 positions. So when people retire, we haven't filled positions. So, and that's, that's a lot of people. And that's impact. It's impact in the district. And I'll leave it with that, with the red card.
Good. Way to follow those cards. Nice job.
Red card, like soccer. Red card.
It is. You've been red-carded. One of the other discussions that I've heard for the past couple of years is whether Whitman, whether this regional school district should dissolve. Should Whitman care for its schools? Hanson care for its schools? Give me your thoughts on such a proposal. While it's costly, give me your thoughts. Fred.
I would hate to see that happen. I think there's a synergy with our students. Whitman-Hanson Regional High School works fantastic. At the same time, your middle and elementary schools, they do have the unique identity of each town. Each town is responsible for its own capital, so they pay for anything over $5,000 that may break in a school. We maintain the schools, we keep them clean and we keep them maintained. But anything that breaks, any major items, the towns indeed pay for themselves at this time. What do they gain? They gain being able to be part of one central administration. We have one superintendent. Otherwise, each district would have to pay for a superintendent. We have one business office, okay? Our budget combined, you know, for the region is more than either town individually. We have certain resources that the towns would love to have. We need them because of our size. I would think it would be a horrible thing to see everything split up. I know myself, I have the best interest of every kid at heart, whether they are from Whitman or Hanson. I mean, last week I got, in the middle of something that'll remain nameless, but a situation from Hanson. And I worked as hard and diligently as I could to resolve that situation and it was Hanson kids, okay? Doesn't bother me. But at the same time, I know when it comes time to town meeting, when it comes time to look the taxpayer in the face, and when it comes time to look the voter in the face, I'm from Whitman.
Good. Excellent. Same question, Heidi.
I think it would be sad if we split. Aside from the cost of two superintendents, two business offices, currently we have one high school building, right? So then somebody's going to need a new school. The cost to split up just doesn't make any sense to me. And again, the relationships with the kids, particularly in the high school, that would be a devastating thing. It's been Whitman-Hanson since as long as I can remember, and that's a pretty long time. So I think it would be very sad and tragic and I hope that that never happens.
Okay. We're going to move to a couple of quick questions. And what this does is, again, as I said at the opening, it lets us see how quickly you think on your feet, because a lot of times candidates want to explain. They don't want to just give a quick yes or no or a sentence or two. They got to really kind of, "Well, there's a reason." Not this time, okay? It's as quick as me asking you a question, oh, yes or no. We just kept it that simple. Or even if, just give me a brief answer. Do you attend town meeting on a regular basis? Heidi.
Yes.
How many town meetings have you been to? And I will also, knowing that you're from Rockland, not only just Whitman, but other towns.
A lot. I mean, pretty much every year, I mean, a lot of...
Brief? Just say a lot. Okay. Same question to you. Do you attend town meeting on a regular basis?
Yes, I do.
How many have you attended? Just give me a rough number.
I can't, I can't...
You can say a lot too, if you need to.
A lot.
Okay, good, good, good. Are you in favor of school choice?
No. I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, I thought you said charter. Yes, school choice, yes.
School choice.
Yes.
Okay. Should a person have prior municipal experience before sitting on the school committee? Yes or no?
I say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now we move into the portion where if you have a question, if you'd like to ask each other a question, now is the time before we move on to our closing statements. Fred, would you have a question for Heidi?
Really don't.
Okay. Heidi?
I don't...
Whole lot of kumbaya going on here, okay.
I just don't. I mean, he's, so he knows a lot and he's very informative and very experienced.
Okay. You can add that in your closing statement. Let's go with the closing statements. And I believe, Fred, you went first, right?
Yes.
Which means when we swap the order, Heidi, you're going to go first with your closing statements. You have two minutes, or up to two minutes.
Thank you again, Kevin, for hosting this forum tonight or this afternoon. I'm very grateful that we could discuss these issues and people could get to know where I stand just a little bit more. One thing I want to say to everyone is, I am a breast cancer survivor and I am a fighter and I will fight for our students, for them to have the best possible education that they can have. I also want to say, I know, I believe in transparency, as I've said in my interview and again today. And I do believe that we do have some challenging financial times ahead of us. I think working together and with collaboration, we can, we'll come out stronger. To me, with every challenge equals an opportunity. Whitman is now my forever home. I have a son and my daughter-in-law who live here. I'm hoping that, we have grandchildren in the near future.
Yay.
And with that said, I want a strong, solid school system for my grandchildren. I want to thank you all for listening to me. I humbly and graciously ask for your, the opportunity to serve the town of Whitman and your vote on Saturday, May 19th. Thank you and God bless.
Excellent. Fred, you also have up to two minutes.
Up to two minutes, okay. I do want to thank you for taking the time out of your day to watch this forum, especially watch it right till the end. It's very much appreciated. I do want to say something personally. There are three candidates running for two seats. You have two of the candidates here. The third candidate is missing. That candidate was also missing a town meeting a few weeks ago when we needed every single vote we could get to make sure the school budget went through. That is disappointing to me, okay? I'll be voting for myself and I'll share with you, I'll be voting for Heidi. That's where my conscience tells me I need to vote. But I wanted to bring that out because I feel very strongly that you don't just jump into a race, you don't not let people know what you're about and try to win a popularity contest, because that is wrong. This isn't the game, this is about our children's future, okay? That's what this is about. That being said, I'm seeking my third term. I'm vice chairman of the committee now. I know what I'm doing on there and I understand what needs to be done. We're not done yet and I hope to get your vote on Saturday so I can continue to get the job done. Thank you. And Kevin, thank you so much for having us.
Just to let the folks at home know, tonight's forum is featuring Whitman candidates for the two open positions on the Whitman-Hanson Regional School Committee. We want to thank the candidates who participated and to better inform the voters before they head to the polls this Saturday, May 19th. Remember, polls open at Whitman Town Hall in the auditorium at 9:00 a.m. for Amy Broderick, who's rocking camera three, Ryan Tully, Paul Watson, who's your director, the rest of WHCA production team. I'm Kevin Toshi. Have a good night.